Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:01 here in Council Chambers. We do not have remote electronic attendance this evening, so we begin with an oath of office for promotional appointment of Omar Morales Alvarado to the rank of police officer effective March 4th, 2024, Chief.
I'll bring Omar forward. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. These are always exciting times for us at the Police Department. Omar is completing a probationary period and now be a fully commissioned police officer for the Moline Police Department. He was hired May 3rd of 2022. Omar attended Moline High School, another homegrown individual here for the Moline Police Department. Certainly excited about that. He played soccer, wrestling, and track in high school, attended Graceland University and Blackhawk College. He's also a member of the Illinois National Guard, joined the 1644th Transportation Unit in Rock Falls, Illinois as a motor transport operator. He actually was a little delayed in completing his probationary period because he had a significant injury while serving in the military, so we certainly thank him for his service to our country and the sacrifices that him and his family make that way, as well as being an esteemed member of our department. Omar has a background in law enforcement. He began working as a correctional officer with the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department, I'm sorry, Rock County Sheriff's Department in Janesville, Wisconsin, and then came to the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department later after that. Omar speaks fluent Spanish and is often asked to help translate for the Moline Police Department. His hobbies include lifting weights, jiu-jitsu, and martial arts, so if anybody wants to wrestle afterwards, he's available. He's joined here this evening by his dad, Manuel, his grandmother, Guadalupe, his fiance, Santana, and of course, the prize of the show, his baby, Mary, in the background here. So, Mayor, if you would, administer the oath of office. I would be honored.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Omar Morales Alvarado.
I am Omar Morales Alvarado.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I invite his dad to come forward in our tradition to pin his badge on his feet. We'll give you a minute here if all the family wants to come up and. Photograph the uncle available to take a family photo. So if you guys want to come out, kind of in the middle here.
She's cute.
Glad to have you.
Wonderful. We move to item 4.1, the Public Hearing on the Moline Lead Service Line Replacement Project and Preliminary Environmental Impacts Determination. Ms. Kostopoulos, you guys have your name text switched. What I really want to know is, do I need to do this first before?
Yes.
All right, so I hereby open this Moline Lead Service Line Replacement Project and PEID hearing at 6:06 PM. Mr. Lodi, please proceed.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. The City of Moline has made a project plan and submitted that to the EPA for their review in pursuit of lead service line replacement funding through their state revolving loan fund, and as a requirement of their consideration, City Council must hold a public hearing to allow individuals to come forward from the community to speak on behalf of the environmental impacts, as well as our project plan, which have been available for inspection in the Clerk's Office and the website the last 10 days.
Thank you. Is there any testimony from those in favor of the Moline Lead Service Line Replacement Project and PEID as presented? Hearing none. Is there any testimony from those in opposition of the Moline Lead Line Service, excuse me, Lead Service Line Replacement Project and PEID? Hearing none. Are there any other questions or statements? Hearing none. This hearing is closed at 6:07 PM.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. That concludes item 4.1. Continue to number five, Mayor's Board Appointments. Mayor's Appointment of Danielle Otten to the Public Art Commission to fill the unexpired term of Amanda Ogsberger to expire September 30th, 2025. The Mayor's Reappointment of Emily Cummings to the Moline Commission on Youth for a full three-year term to expire March 31st, 2027. And the Mayor's Reappointment of Chrisanne Bergo to the Moline Commission on Youth for a full three-year term to expire March 31st, 2027. Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a public comment this evening, Chief? Okay. We do have some explanations under number seven, Questions on the Agenda. You'll note that Mr. Silverman passed out this document to you, and if you haven't had a chance to read it thoroughly, we'll make sure there is time when we get to this item. But it does require us to pull items 15.1, 15.2, and 15.3 off of the Consent Agenda to our Regular Agenda in the regular meeting, so that we can amend this development agreement so that it meets everyone's needs, but we stick on our timeline, which is very important for Mr. Nelson and Par. Any questions there? Okay. And just to be clear, this will, this, we will consider this, we'll need a motion to amend on item 15.1, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. All right. We move to our Cow Agenda Items, 8.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement for Professional Consulting Services Between and Amongst the Cities of Moline, Illinois, Rock Island, Illinois, and Davenport, Iowa, and Mosaic Community Planning for a Regional Analysis of Fair Housing Choice Impediments for the Purpose of Sharing the Cost to Develop a Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, AIFHC. Go ahead, Ms. Whitley.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As you know, the city of Moline is one of the 1,300 HUD entitlement communities. We have been an entitlement community since the CDBG program began, and again, CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. That's what that stands for. So since 1974, when we got our first $151,000, our entitlements have ranged anywhere from $151,000 to a little over a million, so they really go up and down every year. But as an entitlement community, we're required to submit a five-year consolidated plan. Our consolidated plan is similar to your strategic plan, where we're going to talk about the community needs, housing, economic development, and infrastructure. So as I write that plan, I have to collect data, and so HUD requires us to do a Housing Needs Assessment Report, and they require us to do an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So tonight, we're proposing two consultants. One, well, they're going to work in partnership, but one's going to take the lead on the analysis of impediments, and the other one is going to take the lead on the Housing Needs Assessment. Now, Mosaic, they wrote our plan five years ago for the analysis of impediments, so we have worked with them before. I have both consultants on the line, so I would like to introduce Jeremy Gray and then Maria Beiler. So Maria or Jeremy, who wants to go first?
Hi, I can go first. Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Appreciate the opportunity to join you for tonight's meeting. KJ had just asked us to very briefly kind of give you an overview of the two different reports that our firms are going to be working on, and so I will do that. Happy to answer questions you may have, but I don't want to take too much of your time to get into the details of it here either. KJ did a good job explaining the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. It is a requirement. It's a condition of the CDBG funds that the city receives from HUD every year, and so the US Department of Housing and Urban Development expects the city to complete one of these every five years. My firm, Mosaic, did prepare the comparable plan five years ago. It also was a joint effort between the three entitlement cities, so Moline, Davenport, and Rock Island worked together on that. Really, it's a pretty data-intensive analysis, and the data comes from two primary sources. One of those sources is from the community, so there is a pretty substantial community engagement element to this, hearing from people throughout the city of Moline, throughout the Quad Cities, about their housing challenges, experiences, barriers they may face to housing choice, and pairing that public input that we hear with the data that we look at, hard data from the census, or there's mortgage lending data that we look at, there's lots of other sources of that data that I won't go into here. But putting all that together, determining what the story it's telling us is, and then we develop a set of recommendations for the following five years, and these, this is kind of where this plan interfaces with the consolidated plan that KJ just mentioned to you. So we will set up some recommendations for actions that the city can take to further fair housing choice, expand housing options for people who do live in Moline. We will work on that collaboratively with KJ and other members of the consortium here that's working on it. So we won't come to you and propose, you know, action items that you're not comfortable with, but we will work with you to, based on what we hear and what the data is telling us, here, what can we put together that would address maybe this barrier or this impediment that we've identified? So that is kind of briefly what our study is about, and I can let Maria talk a little bit more about the Housing Needs Assessment as well.
Thanks, Jeremy. Good evening, Your Honor. Good evening, Council. Happy to be here today. I'm representing Points Consulting. We're a real estate, economic, and community development consulting firm based out of Moscow, Idaho. So we're going to be conducting the Housing Needs Assessment for you all, and it is somewhat similar to what Jeremy's describing. He did a really good job coincidentally describing the Housing Needs Study, except for, for us, it's a little bit more market-oriented. So we're looking at where your gaps are, where your needs are, and then making recommendations for actions you can take based off of that. So we look at a lot of different things. We like, look at demographic data, what's the housing that is planned in your area, what do you currently have? It's all about that balance of supply and demand, and we're also going to be conducting a survey to hear from the community about what they think is needed and what their challenges are, and I'm also happy to take any questions you might have about this.
Anything further, Ms. Whitley?
No, once, just one more thing. Once I receive that data, I finish my report, my report then goes to, out for public comment, then it goes to our CACUP Board, then it comes to Council, and then it goes up to HUD. Now, with that being said, technically, my report is due to HUD on November 16th of this year, because they get it 45 days before the beginning of our year. Well, just to let you know, we haven't even got our allocation for 2024 yet, so I have not even involved that plan to you guys yet, even though they just approved the T-HUD bill. They have to do the formula and then decide how much each entitlement's going to get, and then, once we are made aware of that information, then I have 60 days to complete that report and go through the whole process. So we're kind of jumping on the 25 before we get done with the 24, but that's just kind of how the regulations read, so I just have to prepare my report like I'm going to submit it on November 16th. Chances are, it probably won't be submitted on November 16th, because that's the only day that I can submit it, because you can't submit it before November 15th, but you have to submit it 45 days before your calendar year begins. But we have to prepare and go through our actions like we're going to submit it. So once these reports are completed by the consultants, if you approve them tonight, we'll come back and do a formal presentation to you with that data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need, you have more to add before we do a motion?
Sure, just for, just for sake of moving things along tonight, items 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4 are all collectively the items related to the intergovernmental agreements with the city of Moline, Rock Island, and Davenport, as well as the agreements of professional services, both with Mosaic as item 8.2, and then with Points Consulting, item 8.4. So we won't be speaking to each and every one of these items unless there's specific questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Thank you. Discussion in the Council. Ms. Castro.
You had mentioned that there was going to be a Housing Needs Survey. I'm curious how that's going to be sent out, just to make sure that everyone or the people maybe most in need actually see that survey?
Absolutely. That's a really great question. So we really like to work with the individual communities to make sure that everyone has access to that survey. So we have, typically, we distribute an online survey as well as potentially paper copies, depending on where that need might be. The primary mode of advertising that we tend to use is social media, just because we find that it's widely accessible and has a broad reach, but we also like to work with the individual cities to utilize their avenues that they like to get out information to folks as well. So really, it is tailored to each individual's circumstance, but we want accessibility to be a big component of this.
Okay, thank you. We'll need to make sure then that there's a conversation around that distribution. We, I know we have had things here in City Hall, maybe the library, all of those details should be talked about by staff. Mr. Timian.
Especially with the Housing Needs, since we've used the same partners twice now, and maybe more, would it be appropriate to draw conclusions based on trends? You know, could we compare these to the results from five years ago and now to see the demand has gone up, therefore, I mean, that could really influence policy decisions that we make, seeing a trend going up or down one way or the other? Is that something that you'd be able to get us? High-level.
Maria, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are aware of previous reports, and they will be serving as a baseline for our reports, so we'll be including that information. So you'll be able to see in clear contrast what your state was four years ago, when the last report was concluded, and where you are at now, and hopefully you'll be able to see some of the results of your hard work that you've done.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further from the Council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Consulting Agreement Between Mosaic Community Planning LLC and the City of Moline, Illinois for the 2024 Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, to complete a study that will provide essential housing and community needs for the development of a 2025, of the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement for Professional Consulting Services Between and Amongst the Cities of Moline, Illinois, Rock Island, Illinois, and Davenport, Iowa, and Points Consulting LLC for a Regional Housing Needs Assessment for the Purpose of Sharing the Cost to Develop a Regional Housing Needs Assessment, HNA.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Finch.
Second.
Second by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Points Consulting LLC for a Housing Needs Assessment to Research and Develop a Regional Housing Needs Assessment for the Cities of Moline, Illinois, Rock Island, Illinois, and Davenport, Iowa.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.5, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to an Intergovernmental Agreement for Temporary Wastewater Treatment Plant Operations and Maintenance for the East Moline Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, buy-in between the City of Moline and the City of East Moline. Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, very briefly, as you know, for several months, we've been working with the City of East Moline and providing basically management and oversight of their wastewater treatment plant during the absence of their Class 1 operator. Going forward, as our understanding as of today, that they have found a new Class 1 operator who is convincing employment with the city, but until such time that that person is fully, I guess, adapted to the new plant and comfortable operating it, we will continue to provide services to them as we have the past several months. So we're recommending approval of the agreement until such time is not needed, and we would advise you when that happens.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Razak. Okay. Discussion. Thank you for helping us do more regional work.
Well, the goal is to look at regionalization when it comes to public utilities, so this is just kind of, all the stepping stones are happening.
Thank you. Anything further from the Council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.6, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Pipeline License with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway Company, BNSF, which authorizes the city to access storm culverts located within the railroad right-of-way, to perform maintenance work, and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute any and all necessary documents related to this work.
Pretty, pretty much a straightforward agreement. Anytime you conduct any type of maintenance work above or below any rail line, they do require that there is a license in place. BNSF is no exception, and this would be so that we can clean the two major culverts underneath the railroad and the outfall sores that go to the Mississippi River, just to the west of the Marina and Catfish Charlie's, I believe it is. So that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion in the Council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.7, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to an Agreement between the City of Moline and the Rock Island County Sheriff's Office to jointly acquire and utilize certain public safety equipment.
We brought this up at the last meeting, and we just failed to have a motion in a second, but we voted, so we're bringing it back, and this is for, this is for the camera, security camera equipment that the Police Chief and our Rock Island County Sheriff have concurred and agreed to share in the cost and in the utilization of.
Motion to approve.
Just with, yes, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. I will say, this is a rare occurrence. I just want to reassure the public, this is a rare occurrence, and we didn't have our normal counsel with us. David, it's fine, it's fine. We can correct the error now. It's fine. All right. Motion and seconded. Any further discussion from the Council? Mr. Schmidt.
I'd just like to say I'm glad someone besides me is pointing something out like this.
Yes, if you weren't at PMT today, you didn't experience his personality nature, which is absolutely fine, thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. We move to our informational. Mr. Vitas, the March 2024 Status and Information Report.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of Council. I will be brief, since you've had the report since last week, Friday, and if you have questions, please reach out, but I want to compliment again the staff for staying on track, keeping the course, you know, and reporting out monthly on not only our strategic goals that are being met, but just as importantly, all of our non-strategic efforts that go on that support, you know, everyday operations in the city. As you can see, Human Resources is continuing to recruit, continuing to hire new employees. The LGBTQ+ training attendance is taking place through the HR Department. We have a new HR manager who will be joining us, I believe, next week, and that person will be charged primarily with the training, operations of the city, so that we can really reach out to our 400-plus employee workforce. The Park and Rec Master Plan, if you haven't seen it, please see Eric, but that is done. The park board did approve it, and that will guide us in terms of where we go with investments in the parks long-term, which is really, really crucial. And then, of course, Public Works' Safety Training. I want to thank you for that, Denver, for getting that done. Safety first was always the motto on the railroad when I worked there, and they were serious about it, so I hope we're as serious. It's very important that we keep our workforce safe. So if there's other questions, I'm, we're not happy to answer them or get answers if I should have there tonight.
Council? Comments? Questions? I also want to thank you for the creativity. I noticed you're looking into snow removal, you know, volunteers, and this is something that the community speaks to me about once in a while. Thank you for looking at that, and also some of the, like you said, non-strategic, like, as in not associated with the strategic plan, but the communication plan you have for helping people know what's going on with Public Works, especially around our huge snowstorm, I thought that was really effective and helpful, so thank you, and thank you for moving on a lot of the staff training that we've been wanting to see.
It will all happen.
Anything further? All right, I will close out that Committee of the Whole and bring our regular Council meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do you have an invocation, Mr.?
No invocation, ma'am.
All right, roll call, please. Alderperson, Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of February 20, 2024, Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of February 27, 2024, appointments made at Committee of the Whole on March 12, 2024, and Consent Agenda Items 15.4 through 15.7, and 16.1 through 16.4 inclusively.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Timian, seconded by Ms. Finch. Roll call, please. Alderperson, McNeil.
Yes, present.
Castro.
Aye.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item 18.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to a Contract with Valley Construction Co. for Project Number 1466, Riverside Parking Lot Phase 2, for the amount of $381,438.40, including the alternate bid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson, McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.2, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to an Agreement between the City of Moline and the Rock Island County Sheriff's Office to jointly acquire and utilize certain public safety equipments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson, McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances and ordinance amending Chapter 32 Vegetation of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article II Trees, by repealing said Article II in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Article II dealing with the same subject matter to align with the urban forestry management plan.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading, carries. And then, Mayor, are you going to do the other one?
Yes, so now we go to our item 15.1. I'm gonna, I think, council, would it be good if I read this out in its entirety? Just that way we all have the chance to hear it and read it at the same time. So 15.1 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a redevelopment and economic incentive agreement between the city of Moline and Par Instrument Company related to the East Gate TIF redevelopment project area. Mr. Vitas, anything to add before we move to move motions?
It would be hard not to add, and I know everybody wants to always get out early, but I think, I think we need to take a moment just to reflect on where we've been. You know, Jim Nelson is here from Par Instrument, for those of you who may have not met him, that is Jim sitting next to, you know, our CED Director, Mr. Mathias, and Tony Lodi, both of whom, all three of whom, played an integral role in making this become a reality, along with our attorney, David Silverman, myself, as well as Alex Elias. And pretty much, you know, the others who are involved, and there were probably others on the other side of the table as well, multiple attorneys, just a lot of players. This is probably one of the more complex arrangements that I think the city's ended into in quite a few years. Maybe one of the only industrial projects that we've actually done in a TIF in decades. And I want to thank Jim for his patience with this city all these years and sticking with us after 125 years and for the next 125, congratulations. This project means a lot to the city in terms of the redevelopment of the east end of this city and launching what has been a very quiet area into something that will be more momentous and more enjoyable to visit in future years. I wish Pat, Pat O'Brien was here to see this. We shared many discussions about the east end of this city, and I think he's looking down, he's proud of this moment, probably more than anyone else. But this project, $22.7 million project, will allow Par to remain here at 52nd Street and 53rd Street, and expanding by building a 54,000-square-foot manufacturing addition in Phase One, and then going back in Phase Two and renovating their entire 44,000 square feet that they have traditionally worked from for decades. The city's commitment to this, of course, was to provide for the stormwater management. We're going to clean out those pipes, the water will flow better, Jim. And you could thank Tony, he's the one behind all that. But at the end of the day, we made some big commitments on our end to improve not only the stormwater to benefit Par Instrument, but it does benefit the entire east end of the city, which traditionally did have water issues, both residentially and otherwise. So rather than belabor it, you have all the data in front of you, we've shared everything we can, and David will speak to this modification, which is an absolute must, and it is very common in development agreements. And it came to us in the wee hours of this afternoon in this format, and we're presenting that as an amendment as well. So with that, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
Would you like to speak to it now?
So what I put in front of each of you is new language that would be, that will go into the RDA, and this is why we had to pull the items off consent, because of an amendment that will be needed that will reflect this. But last Friday afternoon, we were alerted by some of Par's attorneys, and you have plenty of attorneys working on this project.
And big bills.
That this language would need to be added to ensure the finance, the private sector financing is secured for the project. The intent of the language is to establish a priority lien in favor of the private sector lenders and investors in the project. What that means practically for the city is our lien becomes subordinate to the private sector lien. Without this language, as Bob indicated, this is a significant investment in expansion of operational capacity for Par, but there was the potential that $20 million could have been pulled from the project. There was a flurry of activity, but it was ultimately decided, I think quite rightly, that this investment is very important for the city. You keep a longstanding Moline business in the city, you enable them to modernize and expand their production facilities and create new employment opportunities. We also measured the risk as being pretty low that we would ever need to exercise our lien rights, and we do have other rights within the agreement that is not affected by this. So with that, I did include the exact language that was provided by their attorneys in there. I'm not going to read it, but the intent of the language is as I explained. It secures the $19.8 million in private sector financing that is a combination of traditional bank loans as well as something known as new market tax credits. These meetings have been crazy, Jim has certainly been on the ones that I've been on, and there's like 35 people on these calls, and it's a lot of, a lot of work, and it generates like some of the 20 emails a day at least. You're probably getting more of it than I am. So that's why we pulled it. We did, obviously, this is a slightly changed document from what was presented last time we were here talking about this. And so we will need an amendment to include a new subsection 11L on page 19 of the RDA just above section 12.
All right, so we do not have the motion on the floor yet.
I just.
First, yep, that, thank you so much for that explanation. Can we have a motion to put this item on the floor? Motion by Schmidt?
Second.
Oof, second by Timian, thank you. Discussion? This is where I will read out what this new language is. So it is L priority lien rights. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in this agreement, the city acknowledges and agrees that any security interest granted to the city in subsection 11J of this agreement and any subsequent agreement or filing shall be subordinate in all respects, regardless of the date of this agreement or any use CC financing statement related thereto to the liens of CBKC CDC Sub-CDE 73 LLC and FPCD Sub-CDE 24 LLC, together, quote, project lenders, end quote, in certain of the collateral, quote, senior liens, end quote. The senior liens have been or will be granted to project lenders pursuant to that certain construction mortgage, security agreement, fixture filing, and financing statement to be executed by Par Instrument Real Estate LLC, quote, PIRE, end quote, and recorded against a portion of the property as security for loans in the aggregate original principal amount of $19.800,000 provided to PIRE to finance a portion of the redevelopment project. So with that new language, we need a motion to amend as presented by Corporation Council, subsection L on page 19, above section 12.
Yes.
So moved.
Second, that is a motion to amend, correct? Yes, seconded by Mr. Timian. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. This makes sense, I'm glad we're making the changes we need to, I'm tracking all that. And I don't want my question to make it sound like I'm expecting any problems with the project, but I'm just wondering if you could walk us through a little bit of understanding what's the scenario in which this sort of plays out, how that plays out. I just really want to be able to understand, so if I'm asked about it, I can have that. Jim, close yours. I'm sorry to bring that to the world, I really am.
I could put it later, Mr..
So. Maybe you want to. The scenario would be if Par went belly up, and we had no way to recapture money because of any breach of the agreement, the project's unfinished. We have lien rights that are established in here, but we also have other rights on top of those lien rights that are not affected, as I explained a minute ago, by this language. But what's key for the lenders is they want to make sure they have a priority lien. So if Par went belly up and we were sitting there and unable to get back the public investment that's been made into the project, our lien would be subordinated to the private sector entities who would be first in line to recapture off any of the collateral available in the property and personal equipment. That possibly means that the city would have to take a lesser amount than it actually has in the project. I, I, we assess this risk as being very low, but that's, that's the practical effect of the language.
As a leading manufacturer of the kind of instruments you make, I can understand that assessment.
125 years.
Yes. We understand.
Is that seven years? I mean, speaking, I say seven years, that probably.
That will go away, right, that's right.
So it is, it is a plan.
Thank you. Any further questions on this amendment? Yes, Mr. Schmidt, number two.
Thank you for the explanation. That is, it's very helpful to understand this is coming through and good to know that it is such a low risk, so thank you.
Anything further from the council? All right, so we'll take a vote on this amendment first. Roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
All right, now we're back to the motion on the floor as amended. Any further discussion there? We very much appreciate all the work that's gone into this, this is it. So if there's nothing further, roll call, please, on this motion as amended.
Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
15.2.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my. We're back to you, because it's regular meeting. Right? Maybe not.
Well.
I'll do it, it's fine. We're up to item number, that motion passes, eight zero. 15.2 is an ordinance approving the vacation and conveyance of title to certain public rights of way of public alley in Block Four in CG Tulane's second addition to East Moline and portions of right-of-way of Second Avenue and 52nd Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion?
Very, very briefly, we are vacating the alley that runs between Fourth Avenue and Second, Second Avenue, and it runs in between the existing building and the property that they've acquired. And we were also required in the relocation of the power lines that run in between the two properties today, and that's part of the agreement.
Thank you. Yes, what, uh, did I? I'm so sorry, one check, we have not put the motion on the floor yet, correct?
Mm-hmm.
No, we did do a motion in a second. I read it out, sorry, I got out of order for one second, all right. Conversation, yes, please, Mr. Schmidt.
There's no substantial change to this, the only reason it was pulled from the consent was because it couldn't be passed before the other item, 15.1.
That's right, and that's the same for the next item too, thank you.
Thank you for the clarity. Anything further from the council? If not, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, eight zero. Item 15.3, an ordinance approving a reclassification of zoning from B3 Community Business District and I1 Light Industrial District to I1 Planned Unit Development of a 4.342-acre tract of land located between 140 feet west of 52nd Street and 53rd Street and River Drive and Fourth Avenue, and a variance to Chapter 13 Flood Hazard Prevention of the Moline Code of Ordinances to grant the petitioner a variance to subsection 13-1106A1 and 2 protecting buildings, Par Instrument Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, eight zero. We are finished now. Yes. With the regular agenda items. Thank you, and thank you so much, I know we've said it in multiple venues. Thank you.
I would echo what Bob said earlier, thanks to these two guys sitting here, you know, Bob, you've been key, David, appreciate your help and the great, and the council's support.
Thank you. All right, so we are to our miscellaneous business. It's been a busy few weeks while we had a day off. My head is swimming in lots of information that Mr. Vitas is continually updating me on. There's a lot of work going on and toward the strategic plan, but I did want to update you. Renew Moline has been doing a great job just clicking things away for everything related to the J.C. Penney Project in downtown, had a great PMT meeting this afternoon where we heard from New Venture Advisors representatives about the Spiegel Building Project and where, what their scope of services will be and what we're hoping to get out of that, so that's significant development. To think that two and a half years ago, we were just coming up with the first steps of this process, and to know that we're already to this place where in a few months, by the end of the year, we're really going to have concrete information with which to make some, some major financial decisions. It's really amazing, so thank you to our partnership with Renew for all of that and everything the staff is doing to help that happen. There was a miscommunication from the chamber about ribbon cutting this week with Ed Zimmerman Honda. If, if you would like to reach out, I have contact information. I think it's worth supporting and recognizing another business that's really investing in Moline, at least in some of the sustainability goals that we have. They just put a huge solar project on their property, and the ribbon cutting happened to be six hours before what was, what had been advertised, so it was missed. But I think, you know, if you feel like reaching out, especially if it's in your ward, I plan on reaching out, and they're aware of the mistake. So anyway, we always want to make sure our businesses know, we appreciate the work they're doing to invest in the city. I don't have anything further at the moment, if I think of something, well, I will not forget to share it with you. Ms. Murphy?
No, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Razak?
Nothing.
Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Ms. Finch?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas?
I, I, I just want to point out that we have launched our initial task force discussions on the, on the Compass ID program. So Mr. Alderman Macias has done a great job of leading the discussions. He's not taking much credit for it yet, but the library staff is excited, they're working on it. They're planning on visiting Johnson County to at least see what they did there and not repeat any mistakes. So we are looking for a July implementation, and I just wanted to make it aware that we are moving full steam ahead with that project for the benefit of our residents and the community.
Mr. Dykheisen, anything?
No, Your Honor.
Anything from other staff?
I've got one thing real quick.
Right, Eric.
I put a business card down for a couple for each of the city council members. We're full force for hiring for the new swimming pool. We've had over 80 applicants so far, and so our cashier's management is looking pretty good, but we're about halfway there for lifeguards, so please share that. We, there's a QR code on the back that you can scan and go right to the information. But we're the highest-paying swimming pool in the Quad Cities for lifeguards. We all actually pay staff to take the lifeguarding class, and the class is also free. If they come work for us and they refer one of their friends and they work for us for the summer, we also have referral bonuses as well, so we're really excited, I'm excited to give a tour to everyone later this spring, and we're just kind of pulling it along with the swimming pool, so it's really exciting.
Thank you very much, Eric. Okay, there's nothing further? Is there a public comment yet?
No.
No? Okay, and we have executive session.
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition dash five ILCS 120 slash two C5, discussion of closed session minutes dash five ILCS 120 slash two C6.
Thank you.
Second?
All right, motion by Alderperson Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. We are moving to executive session.